Okay, meeting's called to order. First item on the agenda is accentuate the positive. Do we want to have the middle school go first? Yeah, great.
Yes, it's my pleasure to go first. I'm so excited to have you all here at Talent Middle School. So thank you for joining us onsite tonight. We have a number of things we're really excited about. We just celebrated our Red Ribbon Week, which is a national recognition of living a drug-free lifestyle. So our community leadership class took leadership over this and really advertised it. They picked out four different spirit days. So kids were dressed up in celebrating this. Students signed a pledge to live a drug-free lifestyle. And it added for just a lot of fun and excitement leading up to Halloween then on Monday. And we had a great Halloween. I was really, really proud of the students, actually. I felt like, you know, we put expectations out from the beginning, kind of leading up to that, around what is a school-appropriate costume? And I was thrilled with what kids showed up in. They all fit within that range of what we were hoping for, which really led to a fun and festive and positive experience for everybody. Also, our other group of community leadership students who meet on our Blue Days, they're wrapping up a food drive this week. And so they've been working really hard to collect food. And those food items are going to go to Hearts with a Mission. And so that's also been a really positive way to connect with our community. And we're gearing up for our student-led conferences right now. Those will be later in the month, on that Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving. And we're super excited to invite families to meet with their teachers, celebrate all the hard work that the students have been doing, and to continue to build connections with our families and better support our students. And I just want to say a huge thank you to our teacher leaders, Julie Stinson, Celia Rowan, Sandra Tringalo, Jen Baker, as well as Erica Ochoa, our Assistant Principal, for all of their hard work planning, creating materials, and really preparing our staff for conference week so that we can have a really smooth experience for everybody. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Dave Erhart, Phoenix High School Assistant Principal, Athletic Director. Today, we finished our first quarter of the school year. So I see two very happy people down there. Kids did a great job. And we'll see what things look like with grades, but we know our kids were really diligent and taking care of business. So we'll move on to the second quarter. Earlier this week, we had our annual Club Rush event. And that's something where all of our clubs and sports and activities in the school come together for a day and invite people into the gym. We have 26 clubs right now. We have 17 varsity sports, and most of them were represented. It's a great chance to have our students learn about those clubs and find ways to get involved, because we know that connected kids are kids who succeed for the most part. So we just wanted to provide those opportunities. And we've had so many new clubs start this year. A lot of kids excited about finding things that interest them and kind of running with it at Phoenix High School. Saturday's a big day and night for Pirate Athletics and Activities. Our marching band will be at Otson Stadium, 9:00 AM. Look forward to that. Then we moved to Lane Community College. We've got two kids competing in the state cross-country meet, starting at 11:45 AM. And then our boys soccer continues in the state tournament at 6:00 PM at Hidden Valley. So a lot of good Pirate stuff to look forward to. And with sports and activities, winter sports will get going on the 14th of November. So we'll look forward to that. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. Aaron Santi, Principal of Phoenix Talent Rising Academy. Just a couple of updates. Our students, K through 8, had a field trip to Fessin Field Farms last Friday, which was great. We had about 35 people, parents, siblings, and our students, really, 1st through 8th grade, which was great. Great weather, had the corn maze, we had the apple cider at the end, had to pick pumpkins out, so it was an awesome time. Also, I want to thank the Phoenix Elementary office staff and custodians in particular. So Lori Delgado and Wendy Duffy, Nuvia Piñeta up in the office, and then Dave Dustin and Michael in custodial. Those guys, as you guys all know, are physical locations at Phoenix Elementary. And those guys really shoulder a lot of burden for us and take on a lot. So we appreciate their work. Finally, I want to make you guys aware, we're engaged in a kind of collaboration with our counterparts in Ashland right now. We're working together with Ashland Connect, which is their online school. And so we've created a little professional learning community with them. And we're meeting and trying to generate some ideas for how to serve students in a remote environment. So we're excited about that. It's fun to work with other colleagues here in the valley. So that's it from PTRA.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, Board. Brandon Hammond, Orchard Hill Elementary. So I just wanted to highlight, I'm not going to share a story, but I really had a good story. Anyway, so I just wanted to share just kind of the staff do so much for the students, but then there's a few individuals that accentuate and bring out all the hard work to help at a deeper level. Carol Adams and Stormy Baumann at La Clinica that provide counseling services. Recently, we had an experience where Officer Hall really helped out a specific family in the Medford PD. It was just one of those times that you really appreciate having that kind of support as a school community. The other thing is our PTO, we recently had our Halloween activity. 100 and I think 165 families attended. It was just one of those events that you forget about, but you really need. And then finally, Katie McCormick, she has been working on a couple of donation items. The first thing is she's working on a Thanksgiving food drive. Walmart donated 10 boxes, full boxes of food. That's just one part of a whole plethora of donations. And then First Phoenix Community Center donated $500, and Katie was able to buy clothes and socks and shoes for about 23 students. So just so cool to have these specific individuals highlighting people already doing such a great job for our kids. Thanks.
Good evening, Board. Heather Lowe from Talent Elementary. It's nice to see everybody. We also had a really great week. Halloween is always one of my favorite weeks. And I just wanted to share our trunk or treat event. Like, I didn't know you could up things as much, because last year was incredible. But we had, I know, at least over 100 families that showed up. Rebecca was there, and it was just packed, our whole back parking lot, and just feeling a ton of gratitude to the families that I get to serve in Talent. So that was fun this week. Also, just today, and actually District by this week, we have our teachers, we are calling them champion teachers, who are working with CECS to really kind of dive in to do kind of peer coaching on a student engagement. And so that happened at TES today. And I just want to commend our CECS team, because it's really, really inspiring to hear teachers think critically about pedagogy and how to draw in their learners in different ways. Speaking of teachers, just a general shout-out. We've been pushing pretty hard on them. I don't know if you've noticed. We have a new reading curriculum, which is really intense. And they have just risen to the occasion above and beyond. And I just want to celebrate them and their work, and especially as it relates to conferences, which are coming up. And as you guys know, we've been reporting back to you that we're really rethinking how we engage with families and being a little bit more intentional about how to uplift some of the practices that we do at school to share in partnership, to advance learning in partnership with families. And so they're gearing up, and they're like, wait, what is it going to look like? Because we're really going to be doing small group conferences this year, which is outside of their box and their comfort zone. But I just want to commend them for their courage and their bravery to try new things, to innovate for the sake of kiddos. And like Brandon was saying, I want to put a shout-out to Sergeant Lehman. He's our SRO, and I talk about him a lot, but he's a really, really, he's become such an integral part of our community for many reasons. We had our first lockout drill yesterday, which went super smoothly, and we learned some stuff. But right before that, like in the morning, he was over at our school reading to our first graders and just making connections. And we've had some hard stuff this week. But because he takes the time to be there in the mornings when he's on duty and say good morning to the kids, and in the afternoon and say goodbye, he's just been able to help ease some pretty hard stuff that's going on. And so I just really appreciate that SRO program and your guys' support of that. So that's it from Talent.
Good evening, Board. I'm Shauna Schleif, Principal at Phoenix Elementary School. And I just want to say thank you to Brandon and Heather. They just, I just want to echo everything they say every time. I love going after them. Because, yeah, but everything they said is true for Phoenix as well. Some of the things that have been going on for us is we also just celebrated our Red Ribbon Week. And Heidi Roberts, our PE teacher, is really instrumental in helping organize that. So we've had a lot of messaging going out to students. And we had fun days with, starting with Halloween in our parade. And then every day's been a different dress-up day. And the whole school seems to be getting involved, so it's been really a spirited week in that. Along with that, I want to give a big shout-out to Laura Mallett, along with Suzie Serna Luna, for kind of bringing back our Dia de las Muertas evening community event. And it really was a community event, and I saw Nancy there. But it was really an amazing time for connection and healing and just celebrating with one another about those who we love and have lost in a way that was very communal and beautiful. So just want to give them a big shout-out. And all week, the affronta that we've had people in our school all week, former students, families, parents, have been all contributing to that. So it was a really special event here. And then finally, I just wanted to share a quick story about, I was working with a family this week, and they're not new, but they're newer to Phoenix Elementary. And she was just sharing, she's like, did you know that I used to be at Ashland? And the reason why, we lived in Phoenix, but my kids were going to Ashland. And the reason why we started going to PES had to do with coming to get free meals during lunch, I mean, during COVID. And she said, the connections that we made in the cafeteria, the warm welcome, consistency, the relationships they built, they're like, hey, this is a really cool place. And so they decided to move over to Phoenix Elementary because of that relationship. And I just thought about the power of connection and the power of relationships. You never know where it's going to happen. And that just was a really sweet story that was highlighted this week that I thought I wanted to share with all of you. So that's the news from PES.
Thank you very much. Amy?
Thank you. Good evening, Board. Amy Hance, Food Service. And I actually have a guest here with me today to share some exciting news. Phoenix Talent School District is the single school district in the Rogue Valley that gets to participate and have dietitian interns here with us this year. So we'll be cycling through four different interns. And Karina here is my first intern with me. And she actually made some beautiful flyers to help highlight our Thanksgiving holiday meals that we're going to do, that Denise got in your books for you guys to see. So she's also been helping me with FFVP and making some of those educational flyers. And Heather just told us that we can have her even get to read one of those to the kids. So she's really excited, and we're excited to have her and her fellow students join us this year.
Thank you so much. Anything from the Board?
I wanted to echo, or yes, where are you, Shauna? That event last night, Dia de las Muertas, was really, really beautiful. And it just really reminded me of when we create places of belonging, how really people can come in and express their full self without fear and without feeling like, oh, am I going to be, am I going to be able to navigate this place, right? It was really, really intended for that population, but also so open and warm and welcomed to anybody else that came. It was really sweet to see people that have never celebrated that special holiday come and partake. And also, all of the work and leadership that took place at Phoenix High School on Monday, my goodness, it's only Thursday, but it feels like it's been three weeks already with the Harvest Carnival. There were so many kids and so many sweet families that came, and it just felt really warm and welcoming as well. So thank you and shout-out to all of the folks from Phoenix High School who made that event possible.
Great. Anything else? I just had a couple of things. First of all, we attended the trunk or treat at Orchard Hill. And your team continues to set the bar high, Brandon. It was very well organized and a lot of fun. So thank you for that. And I was going to suggest that everyone go to the boys soccer game Saturday at 6:00 PM. But in fact, you could get up early, drive to Eugene, see the marching band at 9:00, head south a little bit to Lane Community College, catch the cross-country state championship, and then make it in plenty of, you can grab dinner, and then make it in plenty of time to catch the soccer game at 6 o'clock.
Are we carpooling?
We could, yeah. We could. And just three of us at a time, though. And by the way, so our boys team is ranked 14th, and they beat an undefeated team to advance to the quarterfinals. So congratulations to all of our student athletes and student activity participators. So lots of exciting things going on. Okay. So now it's time for our student representative report. And we'd like to welcome our student reps. We have two here in person with us. And I believe we were going to have a student join virtually, but I'm not sure she's here, so. Okay. Yeah, maybe. We can find out, but we'll start. Okay, that's not her. Okay, great. All right. We'll let you choose who goes first. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Peyton Croy. And so far, like this past couple of weeks, Link Crew had a little Halloween event, which, if you don't know what Link Crew is, we help freshmen. We help with them to have like a buddy, basically, if they need one. So we had a little lunch event, Monster Musical Chairs. We take musical chairs very seriously in Link Crew. In a mummy rapping competition, it was the first time the Link Crew leaders didn't have their advisor with them, Ms. Campbell. But we did really well even without her. And still, a lot of, like, because we were all nervous without Ms. Campbell. We thought we were going to fall on our faces. But it went well. Still, not a lot of freshmen came, but the ones that did come, they had a good tie. It was nice to see them smile. They had a good competitive spirit. And it was just fun to see their teamwork, because mostly these freshmen, I could tell, never even hung out with each other. But they had such good teamwork when they're doing the mummy rapping. And then Disney Club did a churro sale at lunch on October 28th, and they sold out. The kids were so excited for these churros. And they made a $150 profit, so I think they're going to try that again. And then lastly, our multicultural club had a lunch event also on Tuesday, and it was a face painting for the Day of the Dead. And it was just so cool to see so many kids went there to get their face painted or to paint sugar skulls. It was really nice to see other kids getting involved with another culture, which was the whole point. And multicultural club kids were really excited that they got so many kids to come.
Hello, my name is Brianna. And I'm in leadership class. And something that we recently had was the Fall Carnival, as mentioned before. It went really, really amazing. It went a lot better than we thought it would go. There were so many families that showed up, and like so many kids showed up. It was such a great time. All of the leadership students were being super encouraging and super friendly. And all of the kids kept coming back and wanting to talk to us. And it was such a great experience. We had a lot of fun with all the kids running around and playing all the games. And we had a lot of fun, like, meeting the community and like being more involved. And then we just did the sock drive. It went really well. We had, we had a lot of students participate from each class. I don't remember the exact number, but we had a lot of socks donated. And it's really nice to see all of our students competing to, for the greater good, to get a lot of socks donated to our community. And then we do have a blood drive coming up on Monday. We had a lot of students sign up and a lot of students eager to participate. So it's going to be really great. I'm really excited for that.
Thank you so much. Great job.
Brianna, oh, sorry.
Go ahead. Yeah, please.
Honey, do you know what time the blood drive is, or is there flyers something somewhere?
I believe the blood drive starts in the morning around 8:30. And then it goes on all day until, I believe, until 7th period.
Okay. Oh, so through the school day?
Yeah, it's through the school day.
Okay, thank you.
You're trying to figure out how you can give blood. I was going to make a joke about 100 more churro days that could go to Disneyland.
Well, I need to make it a part of it to do it, and I thought, oh, my goodness, with the high school. I'll just swing in and do that.
Perfect. Yeah, that's a good reminder for all of us. Okay, next is citizens comments. I have one slip. So if anyone else, okay, that's okay. No problem. I'll get you. Okay, great. So I have to read my little thing here. We're moving to citizens comments. Each person is allotted up to three minutes to speak. And we'll have a 30-minute time period for all testimony. As a reminder, meetings of the Board of Directors are meetings in the public, not of the public. Our role during citizens comments is to listen. Therefore, please do not expect the Board to engage in a conversation with you during this time. During public comment, the Board cannot hear complaints about an employee, including those in which the employee is not named but is identifiable in context. Therefore, we strongly encourage the community to first address immediate complaints or concerns directly with the staff member involved. Otherwise, citizens should submit formal complaints to the employee's immediate supervisor. And for more information on this, please see Board Policy KL and KLAR on the website. And if you're joining virtually and wish to provide public comment, please utilize the raise hand feature or chat feature. All oral comments and chat comments are recorded and preserved for the record. When I call your name, please unmute yourself, have your camera turned on, and speak clearly. And then everyone present today, please state your name and the organization you represent, if any, for the record. And if you've submitted written comments, please summarize them instead of reading them aloud. Please be respectful and limit your comments to three minutes. And as a reminder, you may also submit written comments by completing the public comment form on our website under the School Board tab. Citizens should submit written comments no later than 5:00 PM on the day before the meeting. The Board receives all written comments submitted online. And the district website has an FAQ section with commonly asked questions under the Board tab. Okay, I don't know if that was under three minutes or not, but our first is Alicia Cool. If you could come up to the table here. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Alicia Cool. I have a son at Talent Middle School. I just want to start out with essential skills definitions. Essential skills are valuable process skills for preparing Oregon students to meet their post-secondary goals. These skills cut across academic disciplines and are embedded in the content standards. The skills are not intended to be content-specific, but rather to be applied in a variety of courses, subjects, and settings. The following are the nine essential skills defined by the State Board of Education. Read and comprehend a variety of texts. Write clearly and accurately. Apply mathematics in a variety of settings. Listen actively and speak clearly and coherently. Think critically and analytically. Use technology to learn, live, and work. Demonstrate civic and community engagement. Demonstrate global literacy. Demonstrate personal management and teamwork skills. Essential skills are suspended as a requirement for receiving a high school diploma during 2021, 2022, 2022, 2023, and 2023 and 2024 school years. The district boasts a high graduation rate when math proficiency is only 23%. Oregon's average is 40%. Reading proficiency at the district level is 40%, while Oregon's average is 54%. Our district testing rankings are 2 out of 10, bottom of 50% of public schools in Oregon. Instead of increasing those numbers by teaching math, reading, and writing, the Department of Education released a 49-page student success plan catering to the very miniscule population of the LGBTQ2SI+ The Vice Principal of TMS was kind enough to record a quick mini-training video, Personal Education Plan for Gender Identity for the Teachers at TMS. Unfortunately for the school, the video was leaked to the public. Once it was learned that the video had become viral, it was deleted. The school had no intention of parents knowing about or seeing the video. The training video encourages our children to keep secrets from their parents. Quote, "Name and gender changes are the student's right, not the right of the parents or guardians." "Students can make legal record changes around their name or gender without a guardian or parent consent or permission," end quote. "My 11-year-old son should not be able to change his name or gender on legal records without my knowledge or consent." Quote, "Some students might use a certain set of pronouns at school, but maybe they're going to ask us to use a different set of pronouns if we're talking to the family," end quote. "You are encouraging and supporting our sons and daughters to lie to their own family. Encouraging a child to keep secrets from a family member, undermining relationships with parents and friends to show no one understands them like you do is the definition of grooming. I am absolutely disgusted with your progressive teachings and the new progressive principle at TMS and any staff member that goes along with this garbage. What you're doing is horse shit, and I am the parent. Stay in your lane and do your job."
Thank you. Lisa?
Could you state your name for the record, please? Thank you.
Lisa Jennings, and I have two kids in the school district for now. The video that was created by the Vice Principal and sent out by the Principal to the staff regarding a group for trans kids, talking about keeping information, the children keeping information from the parents, went viral. Many of the parents, guardians, and the public have some great concern about the video and our district's push for the transgender identities in our school. In the training video that was created by the Vice Principal, it clearly states that teachers and staff are to hide very important issues about our underage children from their parents and guardians. These kids range from 10 to 14. Something tells me this is against the law. This isn't, this isn't going over well with the community either, and will be continued to be pushed on social media. It was on Bill Meyer's radio talk show twice and is moving up to national news. These kids are confused. They need their parents not being told to lie to their parents. With Phoenix Talent's failing academic scores terribly and Oregon being ranked 46th of the worst states in education, shouldn't we be more concerned about education? One would think. But more staff towards teaching, not helping children decide which gender sports team or bathroom to use. You are hired by us, the taxpayers, to be scholastic educators, not gender-sex-identity educators, and have a job to teach the basics so children can read and write. One would think an adult would feel a bit awkward talking to underage children about this stuff, especially not being your own child. How about when a kid says they feel awkward in their body, you tell them that's normal? Get them some counseling. Don't tell them to take puberty blockers. If you want to know why so many people are leaving this district unhappy, I would, yeah, unhappy, I'd be happy to tell you. And there will be more and more. Heck, what do we need parents for if random adults can step in and change our children's name and gender? So I have, my eighth grader here had to call and ask if he could take an Ibuprofen, but he can change his gender and his name? And I did talk to Medford School Board and an Eagle Point School Board member, and they said, yes. The difference between our school and the Medford School District is there is a difference between recognizing the trans laws in Oregon and actively pushing and supporting the trans stuff on our children like our school district. I am scared to send my daughter here next year if we still have the same staff and they're not, something's not fixed there. And I'm working with other parents to pull a bunch of the fifth graders and move them to some other option. And I'll send, if you guys haven't gotten... And I'll send, if you guys haven't gotten the video and the extra documents from the video, I'd be happy to email them to you. And that and the Bill Myers uh how T M S made a great headlines once again.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak before the board? Oh, do we have anyone online who wishes to speak? Please raise your hand. Okay. Thank you. Uh superintendent report.
Jessica Hamlin, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, standing in for Brent Barry tonight because he is attending a superintendent's conference. I have a rather short superintendent's report. The first thing is Brent would like to um thank the board for their support of him attending this uh conference and this forum. He is um inspired and re-juvenated, reinvigorated by it and is looking forward to sharing with you when he returns. The second thing that he wants to share um is that there is a date for the joint city and county hearing on U G B for Culver Road for the Culver Road facility. Yeah, it's January twelfth. It's getting closer. And then the last thing he wanted to mention is um he wanted to thank Yasmin Karibanas and her team um for um the good work they have done um in accounting. Last week, we had our auditors here for the week and everything went very smoothly, and we should have a final report in December. And that's it.
Great. Thank you, Jessica. Any questions? We will move to the consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm of approval of the consent agenda as presented. Second.
Thank you, moved by Sarah, seconded by Dawn. Any objections? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. We don't have any action items today. Second. Okay, information and discussion, facilities and bond update. Who's thinking that? Dawn's not here. Do you have a facilities update?
Only that I'm really excited to hear that the joint meeting has been scheduled for Thursday, January twelfth, twenty twenty-three.
Yes, yeah, I think um, yeah, and I think the the athletic use has been covered a lot in the news, but one of the things I'm really excited about is the potential for pre-K and after-school expansion using that site. So very excited.
Having Boys and Girls Club have the facility and then Outdoor Discover School have a place. Um, and then potentially utilizing where they are currently for um early education. It's all really, really positive and stuff, so.
Great. And there's a good, a lot of good community work going on with that too. So, yeah, great. Anything else? Okay, uh financial update. Okay, um legislative O S B A update. Dawn?
Okay, I'll make it quick. Um, just reminder, the convention is next week. Uh Sarah Urb uh sent out an email about the um there's a convention portal and an app, and so I recommend downloading that if you haven't done that already. And then using, they have a lot of the slideshows from the presenters are on there, so it's really nice to have that. And then um there's a lot of meetings on Friday night. There's a color caucus, the rural schools, and then we have the reception as well. And then there's also gonna be, if you look on the agenda, there's a lot of meetings like O S B A Directors, L P C, um the ones I listed before, and those are all open. So if you are interested on what is happening in these meetings, it's a good time to attend. So if you have any questions about convention, let me know, and I'll try to answer them. Did you have anything, Sarah?
So um I just want to thank everyone who showed up for the regional meeting. Um, last week, it was really great to talk to other. I always learn something when I leave those. Um, not, I mean, from O S B A, that's great, but also just the networking with other school boards and meeting um meeting and chatting with them. And so one of those things was that um we'd like to host a uh regional meeting with um the newly elected uh legislative representatives. And we're looking at the first week of January. So I have believe I have a draft started to put in front of Dawn that I haven't sent to our whole group. Um, maybe I'll get to that this weekend, but just tentatively, um Wednesday, the fourth, or uh Saturday or Sunday, the seventh or eighth are tentative what we're looking at for um hosting uh Southern Region Meet the Legislators um meeting. And Dawn has some great ideas about um involving all of the other districts um to highlight um the different schools in our region. And we're hoping to um engage with the newly elected legislators before they go up to session and advocate for education and just make connections with them. So um we'll talk about this more at our regional breakout meeting at O S B A and um kind of get a feel for dates and what looks good. And then we'll um finalize that probably after we get back. And Dave, um I emailed Dave and he said that the high school's available for those three specific dates for um the district to be able to host that meeting. So we'll be able to show off our new our space and and highlight some of our programs too. So um just a little early heads up on that.
That's great. I s- they don't have to report to Salem by then, right? They'll they'll be down here as soon as you're.
Mid-January is one, but the week of the ninth is when most of the um school boards in our region all have their regular meetings. So um and then the sixteenth is Martin Luther King Junior Day with no school. So that would have been like the Monday that worked, and it just is starting to get close. So it is right after um the return from the holiday, but it also just is, you know, kind of back in the swing type of thing. So just, you know, kind of thinking if an evening or the only reason we were thinking on a weekend day was um it gets darker earlier. So if people were traveling from any distance, it might be easier to do it in the light of day, depending and, you know, we could have weather different. So anyway, think about it. Think about it, and we'll we'll um hear from everyone and what makes sense for everyone.
Great. I think that's a great idea. Thank you. Any questions on any of that? Okay, uh, let's see. Um, oh, E D I Committee, we have an update.
I know, we've missed you. I was looking for Kelly, but she's not here today. Um, it was really exciting. We actually just had our first advisory committee meeting, and some of the folks here were there, and it was great to have you all there. We um, it's a really diverse group made up of different um personnel from different schools, parents that want to get involved. And I know that sometimes um E D I can be intimidating for some people, but I really appreciated the conversations that we were having about really being thoughtful and inclusive of all kinds of kids, thinking about um differently-able children, differently-able um or neurodivergent kids, language, cultures, backgrounds. I mean, it's it's really a great um place to come in and really be thoughtful about how we can support our kiddos and create a place of belonging and safety. Um, and so we just had our first kickoff meeting. It was great. We got to meet one another. We had an opportunity to really get to know what it is that we want to do and how we want to approach this in a way that feels in a way that we're growing and really being um what is the word that I want to use? In a way that we're growing and learning how to be accepting of others that might not look like us. So it was, it was, it's exciting and it's and it's great. And um I'm grateful to be able to share and create a learning space with a lot of other people that um that want to create just good, healthy places. That was it.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. We have a recess scheduled next. However, I might propose that we power through the last few items if that works for everybody. So, okay, and students, if you need to go study, I know you're studying all the time, right? So if you if you need to go, you're welcome uh to to leave at any time, but great job today. Thank you. Uh, but you can also stick around and hang out for the boring stuff too, if you want. Um, okay, so we have some policies that are gonna come before us for action at the next regular meeting, not the next meeting, but the next regular meeting. Um, so uh and the first one is uh policy uh G C D A, criminal records checks and fingerprinting. So did anyone have any questions or comments on this policy? A lot of these are pretty straightforward, but, okay. Um, and then policy G C Q B research. Any questions on that?
I had one question, and that is, um, the policy doesn't say, and maybe it's just known. Um, who owns the research after it's um potentially gathered? Is that something that the teacher, the district? Who, 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 who has ownership of that? That was my one question.
You know?
Also apologize for not asking previously because I I just apologize for not asking previously.
No, it's fine. Thank you. Okay, we'll have to look into it probably. Yeah, it's a good question though, Sarah. Any others? Okay, moving on. Uh, G D A instructional assistants. Any questions on that one?
I have a question about this one. Sometimes the word um translation and interpretation gets inner, it's used interchangeably. And there is a distinction between interpretation and translation, and I'm always wondering if there is an opportunity to also include interpretation into this. We want to ensure that folks are getting the right information. I think that sometimes um with really good intent and because people are short-staffed and and we might just it might feel easier to just pull somebody in and translate or interpret some materials. But thinking about especially families who are on I E Ps, how valuable and how important it is to have people with the right education and right skill set to be able to not only translate but interpret information.
Did you have, you want to take that?
I was just gonna say, I I am aware that there is a process to be certified, especially for those kinds of.
Right.
Um, and we do have a list of yeah books, and so you're aware of that.
Yeah, I am aware of that. This policy, though, it's only speaking about translation, and this is where I'm wanting to make the differentiation between translation and interpretation.
Got it.
Translation is written, interpretation is oral communication.
Is there a specific spot in the policy that you think that would be a good?
In the middle.
The middle.
Yeah, Polly. Yeah, in the middle paragraph where it's talking about translation services and um testing. Again, we wanna we want to hold ourselves to a higher standard and and hope that it isn't just people who are specializing in I E Ps, for example, but really being thoughtful about how we're honoring and um treating people with dignity and the utmost respect by providing the correct services.
Would it be helpful to say providing translation or
Interpretation.
Services? Would that work?
Yes.
Can we make that change? Okay, run it, run it through Brent.
Right.
O S B A. Okay, great. Good call. Thank you.
And I, and then I, this is just a clarifying question. The first paragraph on the second page, I wasn't sure what that meant. It says the district will not require individuals newly hired as Title One A instructional assistants who have met another district's academic assessment to meet the district's academic assessment standards.
So there are national standards um that our instructional assistants must um in order for us to meet, you know, those federal guidelines. And so if they have, if they have passed that test in a neighboring district, we'll honor that, and we could um we would get verification from those, from those districts.
And I apologize, I didn't make that very clear. I was wondering if we were going to be requesting verification or, okay, got it. Thanks.
Could you make a note about that too, to just verify that? Do we need to state about the verification in the policy? Maybe follow up on that. Does that work for you, Nancy?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good, good call. I love that we came prepared to talk about these policies today. So proud of all of you. Um, okay, uh, the next one is um I G B H E Expanded Options Program. Any questions on that one? Okay, I G D J Inter-Scholastic Activities. Any questions on that one? Okay, um policy I K F Graduation Requirements. And a lot of these are changes due to statute. That's why there's the red language there. And looks like mostly semantics, this one. Any questions? Okay. That is all of the policies for review, and you'll see the next meeting agenda there. Um, that's the jab meeting where we'll hear from our uh building leaders about programs going on at each of their schools. And um the intent and the structure of the meeting will be as it is shown there. We're just working on the order. We might change that up a little bit of who goes when. Probably have Aaron go first because he's always so succinct. So, um, okay. Uh, so take a look at that, and if you have any questions or concerns about the jab meeting agenda, please let me know, or Denise. Anything else? Well done. We are adjourned.